Okay, we're starting our post meeting for October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. Tonight, we have Billy Cooksey is with us, manager of Parks and Recreation Department. We also have Dennis Hipseg representing the Wellington American Legion present. And then we will also have a presentation shortly by Alexis Kennedy. Everybody can state for roll call, first and last names for the board members. Lauren Buckman.
Joe Burke.
Jessie Roper.
John Evans.
Sarah Brown.
Erin McConnell.
And we are missing tonight, Robert Sossman. Alright, did everybody, oh, we don't have any public tonight, right? For agenda, is there anybody on?
I do not see anybody online. Just us as a participant.
Dennis, did you have anything for tonight?
No.
Okay. Alright, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes? Is there anything that needs to be changed or added, edited? Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Most to approve.
Second. All in favor? Okay, minutes are approved from September eleventh, two thousand and twenty four. And tonight, we have our guest speaker with us, Ms. Alexis Kennedy.
Welcome back.
I was here, not the last meeting, but the meeting before that. And I had talked about a silver award and wanting to do one. And since then, I have gotten approved for a silver award to do, to help plan out a community garden and help set it up for Wellington. And I've gone around to the different parks in Wellington, like Viewpoint, Centennial, Wellington Community Park, Park Meadows, and the green space over at the Wellington Public Library, and Winnicke Community Park. And the two that I thought were best were Viewpoint Community Park and Winnicke, just because they have the most space and the best parking accessibility. And I have drawn out the spaces for the garden. And one foot equals half a centimeter. So this space is along the parking lot at Viewpoint. This is all like tennis courts and basketball courts.
Where are the tennis courts? They're, they're.
Tennis courts are right.
Okay.
At the top.
Yep, yep.
To write that. And there is more space over along this side.
Yeah. Why did that work well? What, why did you like that spot?
Um, I like this spot because there is lots of parking and there is a path over along this side. So that's easy accessibility and there is a playground if parents wanted to like drop off their kids while they did their gardening. There is not a clear path to Winnicke, but this does open up to a road, which is good. There is also a park here for small children.
Yeah. Can you clarify where in Winnicke? Because that is a huge green space area.
In Winnicke, so this is at the southeast corner of the Winnicke area. So the playground is up north, northwest of it, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Can I bring this up on the screen?
Thank you.
So there would be about right. Yeah. There's one tree that would be providing some afternoon shade. But other than that, it's, it's actually quite a ways away. It's, it's actually a really big space compared to me, and which wouldn't affect the bigger field that they play on. Like, it's kind of seen as an option to utilize space that's maybe not, like it couldn't play a probably a soccer game on it. And it's right off the road where compost and stuff could come in.
Water. Yeah. Um, so on Winnicke, there is already a water spigot. It's about thirty feet off the east side and twenty feet up. So there's already a water spigot out of the room for Winnicke's, but not for viewpoint.
Do you want to go, he can call viewpoint, so you can kind of show that, that it wouldn't affect the play space, like the field? Like you can.
So where this, where this park would be is right here in this town. So here's the basketball courts and that path that was like around in the parking lot.
And this is pulled probably about six feet off the path. And then without knowing movement, the exact edge that she measured was off the tennis courts. So like to do like compost or sheds even outside, potentially. Like some ways to get equipment in the backside. Knowledge that I don't know how to.
Sure. All things to consider, but if you have the space for it, this is our land, so putting a shed in there is just a simple permit, just like everybody would have to do a permit in their yard to put a shed. But you can see here, we have, it's hard to see on here, but we have a maintenance shed here and our pump house shed here, so it's definitely already considered into the park that this has been done. As far as water for irrigation typically in a community garden, if there isn't water accessible like close to at Winnicke, we would find the closest space to tap into the main line and then drive in lines into the actual community garden so that the people that were occupying the spaces intending to the spaces would have either community spigots. Typically, there's two spigots for every six to eight plots, depending on how they're laid out. And then everybody has to provide their own hoses and stuff like that as part of their agreement.
Between the two, the, the one bonus that I see to the Winnicke location is that you're closer to that underpass that's technically not an underpass from the east side. So it's more of a central location when it comes to serving both sides of our community. And I know that that's often a sticking point. I don't know if that was something you had thought about too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think what's fantastic about what you presented is, is hopefully it can grow. If we pick one spot to start with, we can identify key locations as community members ask to continue the program forward.
So that was a visual, why don't you go on to like the next three things and then make this.
Next three things, what? Oh, so I know you had talked to my mother at a football game and talked about feasibility. Well, you, you told it to me.
It's wrong facts.
So it mentioned the feasibility study. So since I'd already gotten approval for it, is there still a need to fully go through with the feasibility study? And if there is one, is, does anyone have questions that should be included in the feasibility?
Can you help me with that? What do we need?
Yeah, absolutely. I think feasibility study is always nice. I think it comes along with public outreach. So you're making sure that the, the people surrounding the areas that you've identified feel that it's a potential need. Questions could be like, what is your access to yard space? What is your access to any, any space to garden in? Would you prefer to have this closer? Does, does this affect you and your ability to recreate within the town? I would also say in a feasibility study, like what would you pay to rent a plot? Stuff like that. Any other questions for, I mean, really a feasibility study, if you're doing it, is, is kind of getting input from the public and making sure that the spaces that you've identified are good for what you're trying to create in that, in the area.
So, so, sorry, go ahead. Does the feasibility study come before making the decision about which plot to use? So we would do it for both and then use that information to make a decision?
Yeah.
Or others, like if there's other locations.
Sure.
Certainly. Suggestions for locations? She can measure a plot out.
Yeah.
Compare the space.
And, and it also might, you know, you have beautiful plots laid out. You might find that only, you know, a third of the people would, would like to do it, but they would like more space. So that might drive the area to get bigger and then change the price of what it would be for them to rent a plot for the year. Those kind of things would be derived.
Yeah, I just drew a hundred square foot boxes, but they could definitely check like because of all this unused space.
Sure. Yeah, and that can go both way. I'm not saying there's less space or less people. Could be twice as many people as you would hope. And then we have a list of people that want the spaces as well.
So what are you suggesting would be helpful for her to reach out to people that are utilizing that park within that for the study?
Yeah, I think so. And there's multiple ways to reach out. I think a, a common way for me would be maybe next door or posting something at the park, which we can absolutely facilitate in our space. A QR code to a Google form, something like that where you, you stake it and say, hey, if, if this space were to be a community garden, please give your input here. And it can be very open ended too, you know, like what would you like to see as far as amenities? Raised planter beds, you know, the square footage, access to water and hoses, a shed to store your tools, you know, and maybe they don't want all that and they'll bring their stuff. So we don't have to build a shed. So that's what's, what you're kind of looking at to see.
Is a planet, this would get fenced?
Yes.
And so there'd be a code to get into it?
Yep.
So you're playing soccer, you can't just go grab a veggie?
Right. You might need one at halftime, but maybe your, maybe your, maybe your parents are gardening there, so you can't just step right in. Any other?
Can you answer how like some of the fencing things? Like from the Fort Collins grounds? How tall the fences are?
Um, the fences were like six or seven, six or seven feet around there. So like they weren't easy accessible to like for you to do it. And.
The grid is square.
Yeah. Also, the type of fence it was, like it made it
Do you have a preference on what part you're thinking?
Um, personally, I'd probably choose viewpoint because of the parking and the pathway. But like keeping in mind like the underpass and like how it makes it more accessibility to all of the community rather than just the west side of the interstate.
Can you park along Wine Cup?
There's a good parking lot, not. We threw it in second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other piece that, you know, if, if viewpoint, because viewpoint has a lot of potential to be a pretty cool location. I mean, the park needs a fairly big upgrade and the courts and all of that. But there's a lot of space there. And I love the idea of that kind of being a central, you know, you say the path connects and there's that piece right there. We have a lot of housing on the east side of the highway that does not have yards. When we, when we talk about the sort of people who don't have a backyard that they can garden in, most of that housing is on the east side of the highway. And so, and when you talk long term, it might be kind of a neat view to think, well, hey, I'd like to have a community garden on the west side. And I'd also like to focus a community garden on the east side. So that those communities each, you know, those sides of the, of our community each have a space. You know, if you feel like viewpoints are better choice than Winnicke, then thinking about the east side of the highway where we have a lot more apartments and condos and for now.
Yeah, I think that come down to a city question, like where is the space and then where's their water? Because the couple of places we went were hard to figure out where would fit without really disrupting the flow of the park. Like it just would be stuck kind of there and it would really disrupt the whole thing for both spots that we looked at. So I mean, certainly some education on like potential is really, really cool.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's why I like two options, like you do one and then you have the foundation and the, the work. And it's easy to expand in a couple of years if it's just amazing.
Yeah.
So that can be a PR thing too at the end of the project of like, we did this in the scale based on a Girl Scout project. Like here's the, like there is the potential that there's.
Yeah, my hopes is that this lays the foundation for us to start a program. And then wherever it is, as it's utilized, hopefully the people come in and say, well, can we have one over here? Or there?
Disturbing the flow of the parks, then they're just an amenity and a addition too, but not taking away from soccer or anything. It's just, this is amazing. Because some of the questions you're going to answer by asking.
Okay. Um, should do. Okay. Would you need or want my help deciding if or what, or if you would charge someone out? Like to use the garden space or like the agreements or rules of the garden? Like some of the rules for the, what's your garden list is? Fort Collins Garden where.
Where there's eight gardens, I think, in Fort Collins. I think they have eight.
Did they charge?
They charge twenty five dollars annually. And so, yeah, some of their rules were you can't grow cannabis. You have to, you have to keep it nice and not overgrown and you have to attend the orientation. And I believe there was four, three to four required dates for orientation.
Who, who did you meet with for the city of Fort Collins? No, you just went.
We, we got that information from their, the website.
So I think the question for her is, would it be advantageous or helpful? Or do you already have that information to kind of start to draw out? How do you manage like people getting the plots? What's the fee? Is that the committee or is that the city? And how could she help make sure that that was in place before the garden? You know, and how do I get a spot?
That is, that's my question, is the logistics of who manages taking in the money and being responsible for the governance and making sure people do what we're asking them to do. By the way, I do like the idea of charging an annual fee because I think that holds people accountable for doing, for keeping it up. So that was not something that I had thought about before, honestly. So thank you for sharing that. That's good research.
Yeah, so the city of Fort Collins, their program is run by the Spring Creek Gardens. They have a, a team that runs their program. And it's in coordination with the Parks Department as well as the citizens that maintain each plot. So I, I know that's kind of a little bit convoluted, but basically the gardens run and maintain the rules and regulations and take care of the actual facility besides the specific plots. But the irrigation and the cleanup at the end of the year and the startup all are in coordination with the Parks Department in which the park is, or in which the community garden is housed. So there's one at the door, there's one at Golden Meadows, there's one at the eight different ones, I think, all across town.
One of the senior center, they noted about the raised beds and they're much smaller, they're like thirty square feet. But that would be the potential from an ADA supporting different, like maybe it's not the first one.
Sure.
Maybe that's where around this location, there's a smaller area, but the ability to put in smaller raised beds that are more accessible.
Yep.
As far as potential future.
Is that the one at Lee Martinez or at the senior center? Okay, so there's one at both of them.
Yes. But I thought that was, they're much smaller and they're raised, but then. Yeah.
And that maybe would be part of the feasibility study? So, so maybe a long winded answer, sorry, would be that ye- yes, we would, as the Parks and Recreation Department, help maintain that and we would cover the fees that would come from that. I think most of that is to help supply for the water use. Everybody that does the plots maintains the, the gardens themselves.
How is water allocated there? Are they in each?
At both of those parks that were identified, there, it's non-potable off of well water.
Okay. So each individual square or person wouldn't have to pay like a monthly fee for water or anything like that?
No.
Would eat the cost for that?
It would come out of the water allotment from the pump.
Got it.
Yes. And it's, it's such a nominal amount of water compared to like, let's say about viewpoint, what we're pumping in to keep the turf healthy for sports over there.
Right.
And actually would take out grass.
Exactly.
Like, believe it or not, like in some of the research, it would probably reduce the water usage.
Yeah, I would even be interested to see like some sort of rain barrel setup to see what, what you guys do with that.
I mean, it's good, I mean.
So typically then people would also participate in the compost piles. Maybe the city would bring some mulch for the pathways and that would be part of the workday. But that would all be something that would be kind of set up in those agreements.
Yep.
So that people just understood that ultimately their responsibility is maintaining the garden for very, very small.
Very small.
But they have to take care of everything in their spot.
Gardening the space around, yeah.
Yeah, and whole weeds, like those are those four times, like they need to send an email that they pull weeds in the walkways.
Yeah.
Four times during the growing season.
It's very much just like owning a house, you up to the curb, right? So you take care of yourself and the path adjacent.
Yeah. And if they don't, then they would be asked to not have that spot again and it would go to the next person on the list. So there's just a list that's maintained and you just go to the next one.
Yep.
And if you have it for one annual year, would you automatically get a rebid to hold that one again?
Absolutely, because you're making the ground better.
Right.
So it's your spot until you give it up.
Okay.
And Billy referred to it, like two of those could be put together and all of a sudden they're two hundred square feet. Maybe that's a higher fee, maybe it's just the longevity, maybe it's the leaders of the garden that are helping manage it. Like there's benefit to being a leader within that community. I don't think that's Fort Collins, but in the city we work from in Kansas, there was a governing within the garden holders and the senior gardeners managed who was next and the workdays. But that's maybe not.
All, all things to consider.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's cool.
Yeah.
So Alexis, as far as your question went of what your involvement should be moving forward, what is it with the Girl Scouts? Like what do you, is it just get this thing started and pass it off? And that's your, it's your goal or what's your goal?
So I believe to Girl Scouts, it was, I submitted that I would make the plan for the garden and like have it be able to be put in, like all the steps up to that point.
Okay. I, I think as much involvement as you are willing to give, it's great experience for you. I mean, to see how the municipality works and to see how Billy's team works and how you set this up and kind of how it gets paid for, because there's going to be some hard cost and then how it operates. So I'd say, I mean, my answer would be as involved as you can be, right?
So on that, mention one thing quick about reaching out to the trustee. Okay, so wrap it up because she has to go to Sharon.
Oh, yes.
You guys have stuff. She reached out to a trustee and about that grant and in January could apply for it, which could help cover the cost of the shed. And then potentially, I don't, I mean, that would be working with Billy and the team, like what are the initial costs of the fencing? Could there be donations? Like, we need to work all of that out. And maybe it's just enough for her project, just to say, here's the plan, here it is. And we would keep working on it, but her project for Girl Scouts ends, that she would stay invested in it and Girl Scouts is okay with that. So she can and could, but will have to be specific about what she's requesting the money for. And it seemed very positive when that time came to write to the city and say, I would like this money for this. And that could be some of the fencing, that could be the shed. Ultimately, the gardeners would have to fence off their section. We would market that they would decide if they chicken wire.
Choose or not.
So really, other than mulch and fencing and water spigot, nothing else has to happen. You don't have to have a shed to open a garden.
Yeah, you don't have to have raised beds, you don't, you know.
So that's potential growth, we can figure out.
Depending on the water too, that'd be the only other thing is making sure that it has water.
Right.
If, if we were to go to viewpoint, I don't think there's a quick couple over there to tie into, but not specifically in that space that I can think of, but it could be one underground that nobody's found.
We walked it like back and forth.
Yeah. The closest one that I know of is over by, right in between the shelter and the shed, or maintenance shed and then the, the shelter by the playground.
Might lead us towards Winnicke. And then your questions, do you want to make?
Oh, yes.
Or anyone else's?
What, what, what are the times?
Anytime, Billy. Like, I'll figure it out.
Anytime.
Yeah.
So like anytime tomorrow, I guess.
I'm here tomorrow and you're off school, right? Yes.
He likes when people buy him lunch. I'm joking.
About, um, I'm trying to think, would about ten o'clock work?
Yes. Yes.
That.
That would work.
But I'll be here for a while tomorrow. So do you want to email me? Like, I'll be at, at our office, so. If you want to email me, I can be there and we can meet anywhere in and around the space.
And then does anyone else?
Yeah, does anyone else have any questions?
Looks good.
When would, when would you come back? How soon? What do you need from us? Like, do we need to say, gosh, we support this park or that park? What, what would be helpful?
Um, I can, I will probably be in attendance at the next meeting.
Okay.
So that's what I just tried to do. Last month, it just didn't work out.
Okay.
And, um.
We will put together the feasibility, you'll put together the feasibility.
Between the two?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I like both of those locations, right? They're great.
And could potentially email to somebody to approve it, just to make sure that it's correct.
Sure.
And then work on your governance things, sounds like that's a good idea to take further. And maybe we can figure out if there's good ones that work for Colorado or others.
Yep.
And agreements.
Yeah, and we had previously talked about maybe getting hold of the people in the city of Fort Collins. Yeah, Tim is putting theirs in right now, so might be something fun to go look at at Wildland Park. I think if we meet tomorrow, we can kind of go through some of that stuff, maybe next steps as far as what you can do before the next meeting. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Absolutely, congratulations on getting it approved. That's fun.
I saw the encourage.
The other meeting.
I loved seeing you there.
Thank you.
Oh.
So moving on to WCP, Memorial Update. I have some updated drawings, my good. Okay. Okay, so for tonight, you guys know, my husband Mike has been working on just trying to put some ideas together, right? And, and we've been meeting, kind of trying to do some updates. So and I'm sorry, I don't have Yvonne a bigger format. Um, so where we're at now, what we'd come up with, right, was having the flags along a back, that back curve. Seeing this before. Um, and we talked about having that wall be four feet high. Four feet, one to kind of block the, the, the area behind it, right? So it's going to be, be facing east, which is west first and industrial park. So four feet kind of raises that to block things also gives us opportunity for more space to, one, we can put, I don't know what is my word?
I need.
Flags, thank you. Yeah, we can put flags, it gives us the area for we can put names. Um, it gives us lots of opportunity for that. Um, so a few things that I wanted to hear from everybody tonight was, you know, what do you guys think of the four foot high wall? Because then the flags stand on top of that. Also, we're adding the, we would be moving the American flag to the middle.
Cool.
And, and I'm just stating the obvious, right? So the American flag stands higher than all the other flags. So this would be quite raised in the middle, right? So that would be up on a, you know, concrete, I don't know, three or four feet high. And then that pole would also be taller.
So that's all, it would almost look like a light in, in a parking lot, right? Where it's on that cement.
Yes.
It's on a footer or a case armor.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be obviously lit. So those are some of my first questions. What do we think of the four foot high wall back behind? Do you guys agree? Do you want it lowered?
I'm sorry, I'm please trying to visualize this. So if you're at the park and you're looking east, the. the wall curves around this way, right? Like you're in the park.
I just wanted to be clear. You'd be looking at the
Looking at the curve.
At the curve.
Got it.
Okay. It would kind of encircle you almost.
Yes, but from the park side.
Correct.
Yes.
You can kind of see just the natural landscape. In general, we'd be looking at the space that's kind of I mean, it's a little bit bigger, so it's probably more like this. Walking in and up and then the curve is on this backside.
Okay, thank you.
I really like the idea of the back wall. It does give it that, it's a nice block. And then I don't know if this throws a complete wrench in the plans or if anyone said this idea. But I've seen at multiple different types of parks like this, like a history timeline of like when wars were or memorializing certain people from Wellington who have served in the military. Or, um, people have lost their lives in the military from Leira County or something of that effect. To kind of ease that space of just blank concrete.
Yeah.
That was one of the things that we talked about when we met, kind of as a small group, really quickly, so I could get some background on this. Is using it, you know, it's a space, we want a space where veterans can go and, and or somebody who was lost. Um, a service member and to have a, a quiet kind of reflective place. But also tie in the educational piece of it and, and having the history of whether it's the branches of the military, whether it's certain wars that have taken place, having it really incorporate the educational piece of it. Um, because there are not, uh, there's maybe fifteen most from Wellington service members who have been killed uh, in the line of duty. And so, you know, we want, we want to be able to recognize that, but it's not in we don't have, we don't need that whole space.
You can just use a plaque and a tree.
And I think that's, is this what I'm thinking it is? Or is that the burning, the fire pit?
The fire.
Okay, yeah.
The, uh, flag retirement. We, we saw that, um, in other parks, they had places where you could do the flag retirement. My understanding is we don't have anything in Wellington, right?
No. We've used the, uh, junior Marines before, uh, young Marines, as you said, they've come out and done the ceremony, the direct way.
So you're saying that this would give a space for more than just the flags at the memorial, it would give other space or o- other entities a space to, um, do a ceremony for their flags as well. So it'd be opening up the community to other partners to be able to use to properly bury their flag.
Yes.
You said that was who?
Uh, young Marines.
The young.
Yeah, and I think John had brought this idea up probably eight months ago, we were talking about cool things to add to it, right?
Right.
And I think, because right, the time I went, they were just utilizing the dirt next to where Sparg is at, but it was really interesting. It's really actually, it's a nice ceremony.
It would be neat to do it in a location like this, where we've created a gathering space already that's utilized for that sort of ceremony, I think.
The town of Alt has a really nice one, it's, uh, I, it's like four foot by four foot. It's just concrete, it's a square, um, we obviously can make it any shape. They had a very heavy lid on it, right? So anybody couldn't just go and vandalize or start fires, it's very heavy. Um, we can lock it down or whatever. Um, so yeah, whatever shape we want that to be, we can, we can pour that in any way.
I love the idea, um, of, of being able to open this space up to anybody in the community and surrounding communities to be able to do this in, in a space where they feel comfortable and it's built for this.
Um, other questions would include, um, we've talked about including the cannon, not including the cannon. Hoping tonight we can kind of find our answer to that. I think, here talking to other community members, um, Dennis, we kind of talked before the meeting. You know, maybe we don't have the cannon here. How does everybody?
Can I go first? It, it's historically, wh- within the town, been that centennial for quite a long time. And it does get used for more than just a sculpture. And I feel like since it's been there, I don't want to then put it in this space and have it used as a climbing gym, you know, removing something from a space doesn't necessarily that you, mean that you're repurposing the idea of it. Uh, that's just my opinion. I think that there are other ideas of where it can go if and when Centennial has an up, up date and we don't see that fit in that park anymore. Um, I just don't know if it's if it fits this space, if we're, if we're trying to make it, um, more of a a quiet space, a ceremonial space, a space for people to gather, if that's necessary. That's just my opinion.
We'll speak to that, so we can.
I guess I really didn't think of it in that way before, but yeah, I mean, it's being used as a jungle gym right now. And then we're basically just moving that item to somewhere where we're not really encouraging that behavior. But I guess I didn't think of that before, but I was, I mean, I, I was on the fence about it anyways, but I mean, that brings up a really good point, would like, I sway the other way now and say, yeah, I don't want to move over there.
Would we have space to add something like that if we got a different donation, not that specific cannon, but something for the future? Like, would we create space for that?
Tons of room here, guys. I know it doesn't look like it in these, but they're really, it's a really big space. And, and you know, once we get the concrete poured, there's a lot of green space. I mean, this is all green space in here, right? And so, um, one, if we, if we omit the cannon, you know, I kind of had it balanced, right? But we could make this space a little bit larger and move the, um, the flag retirement area into the middle, where underneath the flag. If, if anybody likes that, or if that's appropriate, or do we keep it off to the side? But yeah, we can add stuff later and for concrete later.
I like the idea of having this balance. Um, I would like to see this platform be a wall for our Wellington veterans or Wellington loss of lives. I think that we, you know, we, one of the things we talked about was being able to just put in a slab of concrete and have those names engraved and that that might be, um, and, and again, just throwing it out there. People feel like there's a better location for that, but I, I don't know, did, do we want names at all? I mean, that's kind of, it's been this roundabout conversation of what exactly is this? And what is the purpose? And is it something that we feel like is important to have the names of Wellington service members who have lost their lives?
I, I would say I can, I can absolutely follow along with that more so than the cannon being there. So to balance it out with something is fantastic, if that's what the group chooses, but I would much rather see that in place centralized or off-center to balance it out than just the cannon being there, kind of just like a, hey, we got a cannon, let's throw it in here.
Okay, I worry a little bit about this being right under the flag. I mean, it, it covers, but if you're burning, I don't, maybe not. Dennis, as a veteran, I mean, John, if you're a veteran as well, do we have any? I know that Mike is a veteran. Dennis, what are your, have you seen the kind of new layout for this? What, okay, what are your feelings about whether or not we put up a wall for, or a space for Wellington service members who have lost their lives? Is that something that we feel like is?
How much, how much space do you think there will be, like, between the flags? You, you talked about the educational part of it. If, I think it'd be great to see panels all the way around that whole thing. Maybe the central one is the names of the people that have lost their lives and then panels of different conflicts that we've been through following the rest of it. I think something more of a memorial kind of in order to customer, statue of some sort. In my mind, i- instead of the cannon giving that spot, maybe the upside down rifle combat. A sculpture of that kind, something like that, it's kind of more of a memorial.
Especially if you, if it would look symmetrical too, if you just did like the same style as the fire pit right there on there, and that's where you put the statue, and then you could put the plaque at the bottom, so that way it's not the cannon and then just kind of the fire pit.
Okay.
Or on each side, two fires, and then the, in the center, that's where you would put the what he was just saying, like the statue with all the names right there. In the very center, so that way when you look at it, it looks symmetrical, nice, and where your eyes lead to immediately is the American flag with the statue and all the names. And then from left to right, where like as the eye roots, you go through the historical ways of all the plaques, just like he was just saying.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe there's a step that is not phase one, maybe comes up phase two.
Yeah, yeah, it'd just be nice to get the concrete poured for where we wanna.
Yeah, well, there's a, also, there's a metal working program at the high school, right? Is there any way that could come into play? Where someone, one of the students who's like someone, you know, put in for some sort of contest to be able to make that. And that way too, they could showcase it for whether they're going to college for design or whatever it is.
Yeah.
I love that idea.
That might save some money one, and then also put it back onto the public.
Yeah, we really wanted this to feel community, right? Like everybody pulled in and they can help. So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I think you could, Laurel and like we talked about, just pour these. And you know, then that goes into our phase one with cement work, when we talk about how much cement we're going to need, that we pour these two pieces and build from there.
Okay.
And focus on the, the statue, you know, the symbol and the flag being in that center.
So not to get nitpicky, but we're, we're about there. Do you guys like the shape of, like, do you like the roundness? Do you want squares? Do you want?
I like this, but just the grass scares me, so I feel like people are just gonna walk and make their own path and kind of it's gonna be a constant upkeep of how to take care of that grass, and people are walking on it all the time.
We're gonna put, uh, i- if this idea goes through, we'll put the same grass that's outside of our municipal service building.
Okay.
And it's, uh, a Bermuda hybrid. It's very, very durable.
I just want to say, I don't think we should do two fire pits. I feel like that welcomes like public fire pit area, and that's not the intention. So I don't know if that was still on the table, but I think just one.
We can, we can, there's so many options. I love the idea of, um, you know, we could, we could do something in metal, some type of sculpture. We could pour a concrete, um, you know, monument shape. I want to say I'll also have something really similar to that. Um, where we can put a plaque on for, for something, um, yeah.
We have a cement port, it's a lot easier to get someone to sponsor something there, because it's very visual. I mean, like, this is where we would put the thing that you're paying for.
Yes.
So, uh, that definitely lays a good foundation for, for a future fundraising too. I didn't mean to do that.
All the branches and making sure, and seventh is including the National Guard.
Okay.
Is there any space in here that we could sell bricks to and put loved ones' names on it, veterans' names on it?
See, we, we've thought about that, we've talked about that, um. Such a pain to maintain.
Not bricks, is there any other thing, like, the, I'm just going back and forth with Billy on some pictures um, that I took out in Michigan, and they've got every war listed here. And so like, we get the email, you pass it around. World War One, dedicated to the memory of the men and women from the Lowell, this is Lowell, Michigan, uh, area who served their country uh, in the Great War for Civilization, the War to End All Wars. And on the back of that, it says donations made in memory of, and they have a list of names.
Sure, and I think that's kind of what Dennis was alluding to with flip through those. And every, it's kind of been a conversation, but just the conflicts going around on the, on the wall. And being able to, whatever plaque we come up with would be able to have donation.
They also show the, the service crosses on one of those pictures too, that, that Dennis was talking about.
The other thing that we talked about is, because we, we talked about trying to break into tiers and, and levels for donations and looking at having people donate, um. It wasn't, was it the flag poles, the cost of the flag poles, and then having like a plaque
Yeah.
around the flag poles, like what different areas can we, so we'd have like a general fund that we're fundraising for that would include the con- cost of concrete, and then we would have probably an electrical fund that we're fundraising for, and then we, do you have it all?
Somewhat broken out.
Okay. So maybe we're jumping ahead a little bit, but that was one of the things that we talked about was about having those certain things that we're asking businesses or families or people to donate and have a plaque with their name or in memory of.
Yes.
You know, that that's part of the fundraising tier as well.
The, um, so I'm sorry, didn't get back to you sooner about the concrete.
It's okay.
As laid, this is about a hundred yards. Conquants, anywhere between two hundred and three hundred.
Two hundred and eighty dollars expected next year is two fifty four a cubic yard.
Yeah. It's about a hundred yards right now.
Well, no. Delivered, chased all the fat work to do.
Yes.
Which, that's hopefully, and we'll, you know.
I know like the entire section to do with bricks with the upkeep would be tricky, but what if it was just around the flag even?
Good.
Yeah. So in, instead of laying bricks, it, we could stamp the concrete to look like bricks and then we can, you know.
Can you engrave in that? You know what I mean, like, can you put, I don't know if you could do that.
Fracture in concrete, yeah.
Uh, you know, you could even just do little metalwork plaques.
Oh, that's true too.
That can be attached to the cement. I mean, I think that there's a lot, and that was kind of one of the things we wanted to try and dial in on all of these is you know, putting together those fundraising tiers so that as we get ready to roll out fundraising in November around Veterans Day, that we have some of these tiers identified for businesses, for individuals, for a general fund.
Yes.
And that part of that is deciding on what is the final, what is our, what is the cement gonna cost?
The hometown I grew up in actually just built a memorial that almost looks exactly like this. And my mom was the one who ran that entire thing, just like, oh, you're the one doing this right here. I could ask her what they did with the fundraising and how they did it. I know they were like benches donated.
Yeah.
Uh, they did bricks, but
Yeah.
Uh, that was just like smaller individual stuff as well, but.
Yeah, the, the one thing we really have a problem with bricks here is that we just are clay. It moves, it heats, right? You know, it's, it's an annual thing of replacing bricks unless you have the concrete underneath it and, and then the typically the metal runners down the sides that keep everything super tight, and then you pack it with either crusher fines or the bricks are just so tight.
I, I like that idea of, of, I mean, even if stamped brick concrete, I mean, you can make it look just like bricks. And then if you put like a, a J hook on the back of a plaque and then a metal face that went through it, that you could engrave off site and then stick down.
And that might even be something that the students at the high school can work on engraving.
Um, for long-term fundraising, you want to have something that's sustainable, that you can continue to add on traditional phases.
Yeah.
So something like that, you know, you can do the initial donors and then you can continue adding on it for every single phase.
And that would be, that would be the goal, to have those, you know, the first phase is truly getting the cement work laid and the flags in. That's, that's phase one, right? Does the electrical have to go into this phase one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I do have a recommendation for just from a fundraising perspective. I know that the idea of like selling a bench, that's kind of how it sounds right now. But I would recommend the bench being a perk of a specific level of donation. So, and then
Megan will help you work on that.
Yeah, and then you name each level in a certain way, and what do you get for that donation? You get this and that and this. I hate for people to say, where's, you know, the bench I paid for? It's more so, this is a perk out of, and then you can ask for more is, is the thing. Because you don't want them just to pay the cost of a flag pole. Like, that's, in my mind, that's like top level, right? Like, it's a memorial with flags, so you can say five thousand dollars is that level and you get a flag pole versus I'm paying for a two hundred dollar flag pole.
Yeah.
So I would recommend those be the perks of a specific level.
Megan's really good. Once, once we have kind of our, those tiers, that's part of the reason I asked Megan's for help with this is to have her help me develop tiers.
The packages.
The packages for the fundraising.
Uh, I think we'd love to see if you can get your hands on how they leveled it out.
Yeah, but like a flag level package is, is compelling, and then you'd have different names for the package based off of tiers.
So one of the things that I would like to do is have those set by the time our November Mingle on Main arrives, and that means that most likely having tiers created and then sending an email to all of you with those options and having us vote on them. Because I, that's, I want that to be our, and I know we're on crunch time and I'm feeling it too, but that should be our hit the ground running for this.
Yeah.
So literature and, um, So literature and um commitment letters.
Confine name.
But that's actually the top level that would be the naming.
Hip sack level?
Generally speaking, to get your name on a building, that's like.
Like Freedom Memorial?
Yes. Yes, so we have at times fit around with some different names. Um last, we were kinda falling on Wellington Veterans Plaza. Um. We want that to not be confused with other uh town entity, other municipalities. And so we were trying to come up with a different way to say to say that. Um so. You know, uh. Love to hear your ideas. Yes. Okay.
So we also went back and forth on whether it is an actual memorial if there are not names being engraved.
Yeah.
And so that was my big hiccup with the memorial wording and so that's something that not to. Throw another wrench in things, but just to keep in mind as we talk about that.
Yeah.
Could you see it as like a memorialization of all?
Okay. Straight and then um benches. Uh do you guys have an opinion on how many benches you'd like to see it around here? I mean, I know it's really hard to tell without the. You know, seeing it, the size, the scope is very big.
Are you coming out in here?
Yeah, how many um, you know, benches for people to sit and reflect or visit?
This is eighteen feet? Is that what that's saying?
I believe so. That's what I was envisioning too.
Four?
On each side.
Four on each side?
No.
Original design had three on each side, but.
That was gonna be kind of a donation level as well.
Yeah.
One between each flag.
It might be nice to have a lot of sit space for seating, but you don't wanna make it feel cluttered.
Right.
Around the memorial.
Six. Ten.
Sure.
And then between the flags, we kinda like that layout would be okay. Any other thoughts, anything else to? We'll finalize the drawings. We'll try to put something out on social media, see if we can get a response, if everybody can share it, right? Um try to get some people to push in names and then we can try to vote. Excuse me, all needs to happen so quickly, um so that we're ready for the November mingle in four weeks. Um, so yeah, any other feedback?
I would just think the wall going up one more foot.
Go to five feet?
If you, if you're at four feet, it's a perfect bench to to. You know, hop yourself up on it. Five feet gives a little bit more. And I think sitting along that wall with the plaques on it uh is a little bit disrespectful. So, I mean, that's just my, I I'd like people not to be encouraged to sit on the wall or. Or is that an okay thing?
No.
Absolutely not. I'm I stood up because I'm five two, so the wall would literally be this high.
Yeah.
If that's what you guys.
I mean, I don't know. I don't, I don't.
I wanted it a little, I was leaning towards the side of putting it a little taller too in the sense that. If people are walking it and trying to read.
Yeah, you're not.
That four feet is going to be below eye level where five feet for those of you who are normal height.
You could put it at eye level.
Yes, to to read. If if that is the long-term vision to put plaques on that wall for educational purpose, I would want it five foot.
That's a great point. Dennis?
Yeah, sounds good.
Engineering concrete that high with. Flag poles on it for load bearing change between four and five feet?
No.
Okay.
It's just gonna be extra rebar.
It's like three or three feet, isn't it?
It's it's thick.
But the flags aren't, the flags are actually going to be behind the wall, right? Like the there's gonna be an extra bump out of concrete behind the wall that the flag poles are gonna sit on top of. So they won't actually be on that top thickness of the wall.
Yeah, do we have to?
Yeah.
I thought Mike said we had to for engineering purposes.
We have to have a separate space rather than them being in the wall.
So you're already putting a footing down for the wall itself, right? So you're going below frost for the footing. Why wouldn't you just connect to the top? You you know, I mean, you've got, you've got a footing. Why do you, why do you do another pole with a footing?
The the flags come, the pole had their own engineering um for. Yeah, thank you. Um so uh that was the thought was.
Okay.
It's a lot, cause they're big, really big. It's like two feet thick. I can't remember.
So I mean, just you you said. How many cubic yards?
Hundred.
Hundred.
Add another foot to the wall. Hundred and twenty.
But if you could add another foot to the wall and get rid of seven. Pilings. With with this back here. I mean, if that wall is two feet thick, I I would like to talk, I mean, I'd like to. It seems like you're setting a wall, you're down to a footing, you can set a house on this thing. You should be able to set a flag pole.
Yeah.
And so you could save that concrete there.
I mean, just so you know, we're probably looking at for the wall itself and the rebar and the engineering. Probably looking at forty thousand to fifty thousand dollars just for that freaking wall. Just throwing that out there. And then all the, all the stuff that we have without any of the two amenities. Uh whatever we're putting in each of those, I had about sixty thousand dollars worth of just the stuff. That it's gonna take to get the contractors out there to do that. So we're, I mean, we're we're pushing a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project right now.
But we also need to be thinking about how it's going to be used long term.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a lot upfront and I think that that costs a lot, but if we're talking about wanting to phase it and put plaques on it. Then we have to make, we have to make that decision upfront.
I guess what I'm saying is that if we go from a hundred thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, this might be a three-year project with. For this group to to don't get that much money raised rather than breaking ground next year. So that's just a reality of what I'm. I'm proposing here.
Let's have the engineers look at it. We'll talk, we'll look at everything again with the five-foot wall and see what we need. What we have to have and go from there.
Having the flag poles on top of the wall would deter people from being on top of the wall.
That could be different types of concrete too. If you're saying there's an already engineered for the the post, the pole themselves. That could be a different specification of concrete than what the wall would be bored with. And then the other reason is if you put a pole on top of that. Then you decide you wanna start engraving on it and now you're changing everything that was engineered. So even mounting things, putting any kinda hole in it, you're changing what the engineer originally said was okay. So you might not wanna put the poles on top.
At least have the design of the plaques fully set and ready for the engineer so that he can put that in the back of his mind. Like if they are going to update this at some point in time, let's make it in a feasible way for us to be able to do that.
What, do you know what specification concrete you price out? Just sidewalk concrete. But then that's. Price is gonna change.
Yeah.
Uh cause now you're talking structural and stackable.
I just I just priced out what I thought the, I didn't even. What the ground flat would be.
Okay, the the wall's gonna cost more per yard.
That's why I said the wall itself is probably gonna be forty thousand dollars and the rest of the concrete will probably be anywhere from fifteen to twenty, give or take. I'm not worried about price. If we, if we wanna go forward with the design, that's great, but I'm also looking at this and saying. If we're trying to make all these changes and get all this out by November, we're really just right back where we were. And we're just trying to drum up money for another project that we don't know an end goal.
Then I guess we need to decide if we wanna start fundraising. In November or if we need to pump the brakes.
I would say you need to deal without a wall. And then the wall would be a different phase. Cause if there's nothing to go on the wall, it's gonna be blank concrete for five feet all the way around. And that is not a good look, but if you're talking about a forty thousand dollar increase in the entire project, that's.
I'm just ballparking that off of.
Let's say that's probably conservative.
I would think it's conservative with rebar.
Mike thought it was a hundred yards including the wall.
Right.
I mean, uh, it's just, it's, you have to consider what's viable and if you wanna do it within a year, you have to do something that's attainable. And there will be probably additional costs that come up, so.
If we don't start the design with the wall though, we put the flags in, then we're really just gonna be in a in a different space.
I think it would make more sense to pump the brakes and really hone in on what we all collectively want to do. Find pricing and how we're gonna achieve those goals. Find an idea on the actual wall, the plaque system, the tier system, like we're saying, we don't really have. Any of that yet, so to put that in the public space in two weeks is.
You're exiting a community-funded project to a corporate-funded project. That's the difference in those prices, I would say, just from my experience.
Did I change it by saying I wanted a five-foot wall instead of a four-foot wall?
I think even the wall in general.
Okay.
The the wall itself changes this project from what it was to something much more grandiose.
Yeah, and was that how, is that how you guys would want it to look? I would like it to look grand. When you're looking at it and it's something that's, if it's really supposed to be a sentimental area to people. It would seem kinda lackluster to build half of it and then hope that we can get more fundraising in the future to to continue to build around it. But that's just me too in terms of long-term and how it all is gonna look and how it's gonna phase into it.
Well, we knew since the beginning of this project, there was gonna be a phased project anyways, but I do think the wall has to go in, like that has to be phased one. But, I mean. And we dial back. And not do the fire pit yet, you know, and or the other or some of the other concrete that can be done later and we just focus on just the one path. Down the center with the the flag and connect that to our existing path and then the wall.
Those would be the most logical removals are the two circular pieces of concrete.
My opinion on height, I I agree that taller, honestly taller the better really, but. I almost wanna go out there because I wanna see what the difference between four and five feet for what you're seeing behind you is too. Because I like the idea of blocking out the industrial park. But I just, I can't, I can't see that in my head right now, so and I've been by there a ton of times, but I would like to see what the difference between four and five feet are.
Right, and what what even the difference between like a natural wall like shrubs? Or some sort of trees, like evergreen type trees, that way that could block that too and that. It grows up huge. Doesn't cost as as much as concrete.
So one of the things that Laurel and when you and I and Billy met and talked. Um was trying to not change too much of the initial design, right? Because this was designed by someone who used to be in the town.
It's somebody who's still a town employee, yeah. Um and we've wanted to get this going. I hate to see things get slowed down by um. Well, we've been at this for about six years of wanting to get this going. So um I think there's different groups we can tap. Um I keep bringing up all that had their particular fire or their flag retirement area. It was a Eagles trout project, I think, um they had done, right? So I mean, I think there's different groups that will want to get involved and we can pull them in. Um and we can add or admit as we go, having just the bones laid out, right? And like this is what we're going to get to. Um. I think the community is excited. I think a lot of people have wanted to see this. It's, this is. A strong military um community. We have a lot of um people here, so I feel like we're going to have the support. I don't know.
Yeah, could we go to other groups like the Young Marines and the Legion and do fundraising stuff with them and through them as well? And kind of piggyback off all of that?
Yeah, and the Legion's already been extremely supportive and and has donated money towards this.
Maybe the thing too is that instead of.
That's it, fifty thousand.
Instead of thinking about having our fundraising tiers and things done for the November mingle on main, maybe it is just an initial. Hey, and maybe we look up doing voting in names on that night. Where we t- we take these images and we create poster boards and it is technically just our first outreach into our community. Hey, this is what we're looking to do. This is something we're passionate about. We're working with the Legion on this and we don't necessarily talk. Worry about having fundraising tiers or the funding put together for it yet, but it is just this, let's get it in front of people, let's have conversations with them. Let's talk about what this space is going to be, what our community wants from it. And then that will help guide us as we move forward in conversations with it and we use it that way instead of focusing so much on the fundraising right now.
Engagement.
Yeah, communication around it, like just that outreach portion where people know.
We have already put out different drawings than this to people who have donated.
Yeah.
I would like to see us still do something with it at the November mingle on main. I think we'd lose a huge. Connection with veterans in our community if it's not out there during that event. Um at all of the different local businesses that are doing things for Veterans Day. Um so that would be my hope. And just we really focus on how we're doing that outreach and use it as that opportunity. You know, you could do it just like you did when you guys had your big town hall with the big ramp coming into downtown and having people vote on parking layouts. And have, you know, you could do one board that's just a name board with with images. You could do another board that talks about. What are some things you'd like to see at this location? And we do it that way. And that means that our Legion is there helping, that you know, us as post-members are there at different local businesses, having those conversations with people. That that would ease the pressure off of us to feel like we have to have all the answers right now and to take a step back and get people engaged.
Dennis, what do you think?
I'm not sure you need everything like you were just talking about, but just, I think the awareness part of it's the biggest thing. I still think there's a whole lot of people that have no idea what you guys are doing.
Yeah.
Even just donation cans out in front of people during that mingle on main. We're planning on doing our Veterans Day celebration where we're gonna, everything we raise, I think we're gonna give to this project, so. And that'll bring some more awareness of course as well. But I I think there's just a ton of people that don't know what you guys are doing this. Cause nobody's engaged in this community.
What businesses would you consider having people?
Um well, OCB will be doing a Veterans Day event. Um will, OCB I believe is hosting the Marine Birthday Party. On Sunday night, the tenth, um that's always held on the tenth, so that will be all Colorado. Um so I'd like to see that information there for that. I'd like it there Sunday, Monday for Veterans Day and then the mingle on main on Friday. Um I know that the Manor is doing an event for um Veterans Day. I believe there's the pancake breakfast at the Firehouse, so those are all Veterans Day events and there probably are other ones too. Mingle on main, um that's a thistle, thistle, um Jane, that was her brainchild. Uh Rosenco and Nail Gem will have a location set up. Al Canyon will have a space set up. OCB will have a space set up for mingle on main. T-Bar usually hops in on that. Sometimes the Grill does as well and the Wellington Manor. So that in of itself is seven locations for mingle on main.
I mean, are we gonna divide some up and everybody gonna go, cause?
Yeah, I think that has to be something that we all need to be there and then we probably have a Legion person at each location as well, if you can rile that. Would be ideal.
Yeah.
Which means you have to need to have literature, poster of every location.
We'll have the posters freshened up by then. I'll take everything that we talked about today. Have every, and we can, then we can get them big and blown up and.
Can we do some poster boards?
Yeah, we have a new plotter at work which we can use.
Yeah.
So if everybody will put November fifteenth on your calendar, so it's the, it's the. So if everybody will put November fifteenth on your calendar, so it's the, it's the Friday right after Veterans Day. And if you were around on Monday on Veterans Day, please make sure that you visit those locations, cause OCB will be raising funds for the American Legion. Um, I don't know if that's what's happening with the Manor too. We don't know about that.
What time is it start?
Mingle on Maine is four to eight, the third Friday of every month. Four to, four to eight, and we can work on a, I can work on a little list of, um, locations and where people wanna be set up. And then. Perfect, that'd be great, um, I'll take the OCB spot, sorry guys.
I might be late to wherever I'm going depending on where I'm at with work at the time.
It usually doesn't pick up till five or five thirty, and I know that people have work schedules. Um, but the goal would be, and Laurel Lynn, maybe that's something you and I and anybody else who wants to help work on setting up, putting together poster boards for each of the locations. Um, for that, I mean, two.
I would say maximum community contribution in one year is fifty thousand. Just to make it like completely, and that's, that's with sixty-eight donors, some mean like big ballers, so. When we're talking about total costs, I just hope everybody is keeping that in mind, those are like official sponsors, not people.
Say what, seventy-five three years?
Yeah, that means, but if that were the case and that was initial project was one seventy-five, that means we wouldn't start anything for three years, and that means that you already tapped out. Your, like, most eager donors in the first year, so scalability wise, I, I would encourage to. If it's gonna be a community funded event, so.
What would you reconsider then? How high the wall, I mean, what, what are we cutting costs on then?
That's a significantly different project, it's fifty thousand dollars and a hundred and seventy-five, like, a completely different design. So, I mean, I, I understand, like, it's beautiful and stuff like that, but if, if it's not feasible. It's not feasible, so I just would hate for us to collect the fifty thousand dollars I think is viable and not be able to move forward on anything.
Were we gonna try to go for any grants, were, wasn't there some addition, like outside funding for this, no?
The, right now, um, I'll be very honest with you, we, we started off by saying no grants, we wanted it to be fully town. Uh, participate or local participant funded, um, the town does not have capacity to do any sort of grant work right now. Our grant writing is basically tapped out, we actually made that statement. To and through our budget process that we need to see out our grants, because right now we're just stretched thin with the grants that we have to be able to do the. Do the actual work needed to see that through. I mean, if there's small grants, of course, we can look at those, but if we're looking for a matching grant of fifty thousand dollars and. Um, grants come with a lot of work on the backend.
I mean, the trustees do a grant yearly, right, so it's usually a twenty-five hundred dollar grant. I mean, in addition to any in kind kind of things, but you can always ask for more, so that is a, a potential donor. Um, you know, Chamber always splits half of their, uh, annual dinner funds between themselves and a nonprofit. You know, these are all opportunities as well, in addition to individual donors, so those are the things to look at maybe above and beyond these, but.
You could also, um, approach the Wellington Brew Fest board, in a group. About receiving funds. A lot of money, um, we can also talk to different partnerships, I think there's, we've talked about reaching out to. Could we get a break from a concrete company, do we? You know, there's a bunch of different ones that we can talk to.
Yeah, and I, I shouldn't squash that, like, if you wanna look for grants, that's great, we'd need to see what it requires to fulfill the grant, it's not something that I should say no, we can't do. But I think our best way is gonna be using the local partners to say, hey, will you give us a twenty percent discount on this, or. Will you, will you donate the plants for this and start cutting costs thousands of dollars at a time here and there? And some of the stuff I have up there is, is a little bit high, but. I put it really high because if we're looking for donors, we always wanna try to go above and beyond so that we know. We don't get to the end of a project and say we're twenty thousand or eight thousand or four thousand dollars short, sorry, we can't put plants in, you know, something like that.
We could try and use other programs too, like with those partners to try and host an event, maybe even like quarterly. Now we try and raise, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars here, twenty-five hundred dollars here, there, and then it, within an extra year, maybe we could even raise an extra ten grand. If they are super successful, or you know, we can always see how it goes to, I know like Brandon over at Old Colorado Brewing. He's been doing, um, cornhole tournaments and stuff, and they just did a breast cancer fund, Foundation One, so. I know that is, and I, I'm sure if we put it through the Legion, through all the other breweries and all these other things too, we could get people to those events.
Yeah, see, see, all that is well and good, but we can't really take that money as a town, we need to, that needs to be that, that secondary. Space with the friends of Wellington Parks, and that's where they would come in if that's what they so choose to take the money for. Everything through the town has to be donations and it has to come straight through myself or someone that's part of the cash handling policy, and that's just not gonna be possible.
Would it not even be possible, like, okay, your team has to donate to the fund to play in it and bring awareness or something? Is that way too, it's like you're getting community engagement as well as, you know, people talking about it and. You know, even if people are driving by the brewery, they come and see, I don't, I'm just using that as an example, right?
Yeah, it is, but I, I think the whole idea of setting up a, the secondary. Spaces that you can take it in any manner, it's not just so strictly, has to be donated to the rec site, you have to sign up for recreation and put it in our donation. Or just write us a check for it, and, and all that is just so much more. It, it's just so much singularly directed, where the funds then, if, if you're a five oh one C three, can be used to generate more funding. Set up a space to do all this stuff and there's not as much restriction. Um, as a town, I just can't only accept money in, like, straight donations.
Is it possible to do stuff like that with that group?
It's gonna take a few more months for the tax deduction piece. So that's why any big donations up to that point, we have to be commitments, not actual money. I, I do wanna put into context, we have a C Community Services Center. Currently have a little bit over eight hundred thousand dollars in the bank, they've been working on it several years, and one of those donors was the county that gave them. A half a million dollars, so we're talking about raising hundreds of thousands of dollars, they're trying to fund millions, we're talking about a multi-year. Project, so, I, I, I keep bringing bad news, but I just, I really need to put that into perspective, and that's, I mean, and they have a lot, larger reach. As to who would be donating, so, um, I don't know, I feel like some things need to scale in a certain way. But the nonprofit would ho- host that cornhole.
Anything else? We have a lot more to cover. So we'll finalize the design, um, I can, we'll get more dimensions on there, um, in the meantime, we can get some better costs, you know. We're dealing brand construction, some of the costs we were looking at was two hundred dollars a yard, he's putting almost three hundred dollars a yard. So obviously there's some, some, um, changes there. Um, so I think we can get some more detailed quotes so that we have better pricing, so everybody's, we're on the, the right page.
Would you guys consider doing a completely different design as a different option?
You know, eh, we can design over and over and over again, right?
But like a, this design versus this design?
I don't know, but we, we've kind of been at this for like eight years, um, we've had the design for a while, we, the place was chosen. Um, by a town employee because of all the locations to the electrical and to the water and to the things that we would need for this. Um, I would hate to see it start from scratch and spend another eight years redesigning and reworking it. Feel like we can probably get it to a cost that's attainable, um. Just by being creative with it, but that's me, I've been at this for a while, so, um, it's up to you guys really.
I mean, like Dennis was saying too, there's just not a lot of people who know about it yet. I think there's, there could be a lot of hidden donors that maybe they just have no idea. So if we just start bringing it into the, asking the community, getting them involved.
I think that's a good start, and then we look at hitting the ground running come January with, um, looking at finalizing costs on things and. You know, cause we may have donors who see these designs and, like you said, are like, hey, well, here's a hundred thousand dollars I wanna donate. You know, you just, we just don't know, we have no idea, and until we put that information out there, we have no idea what the possibilities are.
And who, and whom they work for, like, yeah, I'll just give you all the benches, cause you have a connection.
What I'm hearing from Laurel Lynn, and again, I'm fairly new to the board, but this, this project is near a dear. And this design has been specifically created for that location. I would hate to see us start over again too.
Well, we spent money on engineering. For, for this design, we've taken money.
Yeah, we've already.
Towards this design, like, I think we're kind of.
To be honest, that space itself doesn't lend for much more of a different design than kind of the half moon shape. We can internally change the, the look of it, but really that. Just where it's at, the floodplain and, um, the fact that we already did the, the engineering for the. The staking for the, sorry, my words are. Surveying, thank you, it's all done. They've already moved dirt for it, so.
No, I think it's great, I just, I just wanted to actually help them, that's all.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely, but I just think we're at the point where maybe we, you know, we can, we can make a few adjustments, right? We can do a few things to try to bring that cost down, we can work with those partnerships, we can get the word out.
And that's more what I'm saying, like a value engineering kind of thing, like, if we had to cut costs, we would do it here, here and here, and these are things that we would cut off the list. And what are the value of those things to make it more affordable, so I, I, in, yeah, so. I, I don't know, I'm fully behind whatever you guys wanna do, and I'm gonna do my best for helping with fundraising, I just really want it to happen. So.
Anybody have anything else?
I'm just gonna send an email to everybody now, and that'll just serve as a space for all the stuff we kinda just talked about, if you wanna just throw it in there, so we continue to talk about it. Like, if we want all the dates that were described that week and where the places are, so that everybody can start figuring out where they're gonna go, just put it in that email. And we'll just keep a chain going, so I know we can really kick this off and get the public outreach out there. Well, if we're dividing up places for mingle on Maine, I'll take T-Bar, front rib night, so.
Okay, yeah, we can put that out.
I just sent it, just very basic for now, add to it, comment on it.
I'm gonna, I'll create a thing, or I'll respond to everybody with all that information, not right now. Yep, doc, so we're, it's almost here?
Next Wednesday or Thursday it should show up, it's on a freight to Denver as we speak. So we have. I, I asked today what the best time for installation will be, I don't know if we'll, we'll be able to get to it next week. Because if it gets in on Thursday, it's kinda hard to throw together a team to say we'll get it on Friday, but the. Okay, that's funny, I just got an email from this guy, he said eleven four for the install work best, cause we'll be. Part of our team will be out the following week of October, of Halloween week at the Colorado Parks and Rec Conference. So, so we'll put it together the first week of November, looks like eleven four is the date that we just set.
And how long will that take?
One day. Yep, it'll be out there for a day, um, town engineer has everything but the stamp on the floodway permit. He's working from home right now, but he's got it all written up, I've sent it, he sent it to me today. And I approved everything, so when he gets back in the office on Monday, he will stamp that, so we're good to go with the dock. Um, the next phase will then just be getting the concrete, which is what the permit is for. Um, the concrete put in, I have a meeting tomorrow at one with the guy that came out and looked at a bunch of different spaces for concrete improvements around town. He knows that that's project number one on his list to complete for us, so we'll be talking tomorrow at one about his timing for that. But it has to go in, I think, as I mentioned, after the dock does, just in case, we have to move where the dock actually sits based on. How it lays out into the water and how it looks for, for the future, so wherever that end ramp goes is where we'll pour the concrete. Oh, I don't know if we wanna discuss any for, I know we're, how do you almost had an hour forty minutes, but do you wanna table? The opening, since really it'll just be. A few days before our meeting that it gets put in, or do we wanna talk about that now?
Thoughts, guys? I wanna do something.
This year?
Yeah, something, um, the water didn't go down, right?
We got a, a good last push of water, it's still pretty full.
Um, I would hate to see it sit there installed for six months, seven months, eight months before we do something, right, and it just feels like.
Especially cause we'll probably will close it down when there's ice over the ponds. Cause you can't be on the pond technically when it's frozen, so we can't have people on the dock. For safety reasons.
So I'd like to do something, is it huge? Probably not, but, you know, let's somehow be excited about this talk. I don't know if we could do anything later that week, on the ninth, the sixteenth, any of those Saturdays?
Well, the fifteenth is gonna be right after that mingle on Maine, I don't know if people are gonna be tapped out by then.
I, honestly, I don't think we're looking for this to be, this maybe just me, like some huge community event. We're not really gonna have in November, like a ton of amenities out there, I think it'd just be like a ribbon cutting and, um. Commemorating those who have worked on it in the past, inviting people, just having pictures of like insulation and the opening of the dock, and then. Next year, maybe we do a first dock party or something like that, when we stock it with fish, we're not looking to go out and have a fishing derby this year, but just like. Laurel Lynn said, just gonna sit there, we wanna definitely be like, hey, we put it in, and also it's part of a grant, so we probably should take some photos of that. To make sure that we get our grant refund.
We wanted this for five years. We got it. Also, it's, it's showing that post gets things done, right, like, we're, we're, here's what we accomplished this year, we're so excited. And it, you know, obviously then shows the trustees too, that we're serious, we're involved, we're trying to do stuff in the community, we're getting, you know.
So will the concrete be done by the sixteenth?
If, if the concrete isn't done by the sixteenth, it can still be ADA accessible if we, um, match up the crusher fines. Cause there's crusher fines there, but we'll have to level out the crusher fines to the new.
So it doesn't really matter if the concrete's done or not, the dock, the dock will be installed, let's just plan on the sixteenth and whoever can come come, and we'll take pictures and smile.
And the weather might not be good enough to put concrete in anyways, so we don't know that, concrete might go in next year, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
We were thinking, uh, I spoke with Kelly about this after we talked, and just wanted to do something, just inviting key stakeholders. Those that put letters of recommendation, um, partners that we've had across town, like inviting those from the Boys and Girls Club. Just to come witness, past pros members, current pros members, trustees, and just maybe even doing like a mid morning. And then just doing coffee and donuts and a ribbon cutting. Yeah, well, they sent the letter of recommendation for the, for the dock, so just, I'll, I'll let Mel know.
Eleven, on the sixteenth then?
Day after the mingle.
Me not eleven.
Yeah.
I might not be. Can I show up without my pajamas?
We might do something like a first cast still. You know, for.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Keep it, keep it fairly low key.
Are you getting the first cast?
No, I am absolutely not. I think we're gonna give that to Kevin. Past pros member whose idea it was and worked very hard to. To promote accessibility within our town.
Yeah, and he's gonna come see us at our next meeting and kinda talk some more about ADA and how we can uh. Make things better. Uh having him on the board was. Really eye opening. There are so many things where I said, oh my gosh, I had no idea. Um so I, yeah, um. This, it'll be great. He'll come to our meeting, we'll do the the dock party and it'll be good. Okay, anything else on that one?
Think we're good there.
Okay. Really wanted to get to member positions tonight, is that okay? Are we doing okay?
Yeah. Is everybody else doing okay? It's a long one.
Yeah. So um we wanted to shake things up, right, with chair, co-chair secretary, and then we've been talking about different subcommittees. I'm gonna get sad. Um it's been a long time of not having enough people um involved in post. And I am so excited to have all of you sitting. John can attest, you know, it's it's been a long road to get people here that are really passionate, really excited. So thank you. And um yeah, so it's time to have everybody have have their um responsibilities and. I think this board is going places, doing things, and I'm just so excited, so and grateful. So that being said, sorry.
What are you sorry for? It's off, there's no owls. I think everyone is grateful for you. Can I say that first off, like you've you've drug this through. Thick and thin and mostly mostly thick stuff you've drug it through. It hasn't been a lot of easy times, I, you know. At one point you were um building the parks by yourself. Well, not by yourself, but as a board rather than having. Uh full on support from the rest of the board and town staff and town administration, um so.
Yeah, this group started in twenty twelve, um with people who were just passionate about parks. There was nothing here at the time. Um they started meeting um in the little room over there on the side of the library when we could meet. Um and it was just people that were really excited and wanna get get a park going. Um obviously, we got community park going, but Winnicke went in first. Um then we got um willing to community park in. Again, that was all grassroots. That was us going out and getting the bids. I was in charge of getting bids from tennis court people. Like, we didn't have what we have now, obviously, which is so amazing to have the staff, so. Since twenty twelve, we've come a really long way and I'm just really excited, so. Um and and John's been part of this for a long time too, being being here, so um speaking for us both, like we're just. We're excited and really happy that you're all here and so passionate, so.
Guys have done an outstanding job.
Yeah, it's awesome, so.
Still a lot more to do, but.
Yeah.
I think with I think with the group that's here now, we've probably in the safe hands.
Yeah.
I think we got a lot of good hard workers here. It's a lot of good things coming up, so.
Yep. So um. How do I, I'm not sure how we formally do this. We've done it so many different ways over the years, um.
I can't vote, so I don't know.
For.
I think some of the other times it was, who wants to do what?
Yeah, who wants to do what? Um you know, I I really would recommend um John as our chair. Um John's been here a long time, right? Been through all of it, seen all of it. Um that's obviously well spoken and um. That would be my recommendation. Um would be John for chair. Very interested in anybody who wants to be co-chair.
Do we, do we nominate and then accept and then vote? Is that how we do it, or what do we?
Yeah, I think pretty open forum, cause I think this is pretty great group.
So you just nominated John? Does that need to be accepted then?
Yes.
Yeah.
All those in favor? John, congratulations.
Thank you for accepting.
Yep.
Um co-chair, is anybody interested? I was actually gonna nominate Joe. He looks bright eyed and.
The one that really excited me was event liaison, but co-chair, I'd love to. I'd love to hear about it a little bit more. What would, what would that exactly entail?
So obviously chair, right, um leads the meeting, co-chair um also participates in that and um helps with. Um setting the agenda with um Billy. These are all roles we're gonna push out more, but John helped me, that's.
So I have a question for you. Are you ready to take a step back from chair? Is that why you nominated John?
I I'm I'm ready. I I think um.
I could probably speak on it a little bit. When when Laura Lynn ended up being chair, we were down to pretty much me and her. There was a time where we were seeing members. And I don't think Laura Lynn really wanted it at the time, um but has done a fantastic job s- since running chair. I think Laura Lynn's really passionate about the board, but. You had a lot going on and then, I mean, it wasn't really your intention to chair the board in the first place.
No, I've always made a better co-chair or other position. It really wasn't, I never wanted to be.
Cause since I've been on the board, I think there's been. At least three others, if not four other chairs since I've been here. And that's six years.
Or, cause I also feel like co-chair would be a solid spot too.
Right.
But I also, part of the reason I nominated Joe is because I know how much you're holding. And I wondered if, you know, it could be a. You you have so much guidance to give and so much experience with that, that maybe you can help. Guide Joe in that without feeling like all of that rests on your shoulders. But that's just my perspective.
I'm happy to fill any of these roles and be supportive and I can support in any of these ways. I'm so dang excited that we have people here that would be good in any of these roles, like sitting and thinking going, well, Jessie would be good at any of these. She can do any of these, right? Sarah can do any of these, like. I just don't really.
Yeah, there's a like a. A broad, like this is what your job kinda is, but then it's also loose to interpretation where. Laura Lynn runs the meetings a certain way. We had other chairs around him a different way. I'm obviously gonna do it different, but. There's just different, I mean, secretary is gonna, you know, some notes and help Billy with the agenda items and and. I don't know, I mean, it's just really what works out best for that position.
And we can talk about some of these other positions too, you know, if you'd rather do some of these things um as well.
Jessie, how are you feeling about what you have the capacity to take on?
Well, I think it remains to be seen what the Friends of Wellington role entails in that five oh one C three, we're, we haven't talked about that yet, but that's. Slowly coming into fruition. Um. I would be also interested in the secretary role. Um that's something that. I'd be interested in, so those two, I think. I'm not nominating myself.
No, I think it's good to hear what people are. It's important for us to know what people are interested in.
Wherever I can help.
I also wanna say, I'm not, I didn't wanna fully shy away from the nominee or anything like that. I'm not afraid of any extra worker. But then longer harder hours with you guys or anything like that. I just wanted to kinda find out a little bit more what it is and. I wanna make sure that you guys too also feel that way. I'm brand new, right? This is only my second.
Right.
So I don't wanna take that spot away from.
I guess I'll throw my input in for a second, just give you a little background. Laura Lynn and I were just kind of. More or less just spitballing ideas that would help this group move forward. And a fundraising position and a and a partnerships liaison in event, like. They're all very intertwining, but it's kind of just one person that can heads that or is. For the chair and myself, the person to go to, like, let's just say, I'm just throwing this out here. Um since he's not here, Robert takes over the partnerships liaison. It's like. All the people that work with pros kind of know who to get a hold of, or if there's another meeting for him to go to. That would be the person that does that, but it doesn't have to be the only person that does that. It's just like that person that holds that little space. Events is the same, you know, it's not like you have to set up events, but like if we have. Like uh trick or treat down Main Streets coming up and Parks and Rec is very heavily involved. I know who on the board I'm gonna go to to say, how can you get people on on post? To help me out rather than sending an email out to pros and waiting for everybody to come back. It's just like, hey, I'm just looking at, I'm not saying you're doing it, they're like. Hey Jessie, can you see if you can get us any volunteers to help um at the next park and play? Or what are your ideas to help us out at the the fishing derby or whatever that looks like? It's just the one thing that like all the events. Does that make sense? But everybody's gonna be involved in all of this stuff.
Yeah, and a chair can also be a liaison.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Aaron, Sarah, interest levels?
I I cannot uh take on a co-chair position. I. And I would prefer not to do a secretary, I'm okay. Protect, trying to protect myself and not overextend. Of course, I'm doing like three different businesses right now.
I know.
Um which I is not any different than you or half of the other people in this room. Um you know, I. I'm really drawn uh like Joe to the events liaison piece, because that's a huge part of what my experience has been. Um but I also know that there are some people who don't like working with me and I would hate to see that. Um impact certain like event stuff. I feel like I've been in the circle a long time, so in that circle within businesses.
We could also make it, it doesn't have to be one, two, three or four there. It can just be. A s- a subcommittee of like the liaison group, right? Um. And if you guys wanna tackle events as a two or three of you and fundraising, that's kind of all goes together. It doesn't have to be like. I am the person. This is kind of what we were thinking, you know, there's not like it can't be, but there's seven different spaces. One person kinda takes on their own role, but we're all gonna come mingle.
For me, when I was looking at event liaison would be, you know, we look at Arbor Day, right? It sneaks up on us on us every year. We're like, oh gosh, this is important, but what do we want it to look like? Having that person be like, okay, this is what we did last year and we just wanna build on this next thing, right? We have awesome staff that are gonna pull all that stuff together, right? But we're just throwing in, we're helping out, we're kinda just building upon what we did and and keeping sight of it, right? Like Kids to Park Day, how are we gonna make sure we stay on top of that and it's gonna be awesome, Arbor Day, National Trails Day, like. None of this is meant to.
I nominate Jessie for secretary.
Okay. I accept.
I second.
All those in favor? Yeah, that's your job. Wait, whose job is it?
Are we starting now or?
Say those words. All those in favor?
Oh, yeah. Yes, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
You're welcome.
Jessie, we do have our um. Uh bylaws which include um keeping notes, keeping really good notes, right, and working with with Billy for minutes.
So, yeah, my goal would not to be doing the minutes anymore.
Like to not.
Okay.
And then um I'd like to get back in the habit, which I sent you guys, was annual report. At the end of this year, you're kind of just writing out. It can just be one page of like, here's what we accomplished, here's what we're hoping for next year. That way, anytime new board members come in, they can read through the past several years and go, okay, twenty seventeen, we got that. Um so nothing too crazy. Robert's gonna just get what he gets. Um grant liaison is going to be the person that can just help look for grants. So the, you're not writing grants, you're not. Doing any of that, right? We're just looking um what what's out there, what's available, who can we reach out to? Town staff, but I'm really doesn't have time to spend hours and hours and hours looking at all the different grant opportunities. So it'd be really cool if somebody in their spare time can can look up what's available and then bring that to um ours and his attention and. And then move it up there.
Yeah, and for this, thinking about it now, it's just grants are usually at least. A year ahead, so what we do is we identify projects first and we have a lot of them identified and then you take those projects and say, what grants can we now fund? Or find, and then the funding will be available typically in the the following year or maybe even a year and a half out, right?
Are there certain places you look for those grants? Like are there websites or is it just like a Google search?
Yeah, you I would Google search. I'll I'll probably stay on top of the grants that come directly from like Colorado Parks Recreation, National Parks Recreation. Arbor Day Foundation, like those large grants that I'm basically always getting emails from. I think it's just the little obscure ones that don't necessarily fit Parks and Rec, but it's like, hey, here's a ADA. Grant from the federal government that nobody freaking knows about, because it's, you know, a two thousand dollar match, but it's like, can we actually swing for that? You know, just the random little ones that would, that aren't tied to the the large organizational stuff, like playground stuff. I get that all the time. Ten grants that come across my desk, you know, we have to qualify for that. But that person would work with me to look at that and screen it and say, yeah, we probably don't qualify for that because of X, Y and Z within our town. But we would, we would write the grants.
Yeah.
The town would.
Yeah. Be bringing to attention.
I like grants.
Aaron is incredibly resourceful. I just wanna know that. You are researching everything constantly.
Oh, yeah, I would say I have a lot of friends who work at CSU that I could talk to and learn from them as well, that are going for their doctorate and they. Their entire education fund is all government grants. So just kinda getting. In the groove of that and working with them too, I could definitely do that if you guys would want to. No one else wants to do it.
You got it. It's it's definitely something a little more technical, right, than than all this, so. Doesn't mean we wanna take you away from working events and being at events.
But we know you came with a strong skill set.
Yeah, I figured since you're saying we'll mix and mingle and do everything. But yeah, if no one else wants to do that, I'll definitely help on that.
Okay. Sarah, you were saying you're interested in.
Yeah.
Or is that too much?
No, I mean, it kinda fits in with what I'm doing anyway with mingle on main and all of that. I feel like it kinda slides in seamlessly. Um and I'd love, you know, to pick Joe's brain and have Joe's help with that. If he's willing to, I think that we could probably between the two of us make a pretty solid team for that, if it doesn't put too much on your plate to do both.
I have more, I have. Free time.
Okay.
I'm I'm here right now.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I think between us, we could probably. Handle the event piece.
Do you think that fundraising kinda goes along with that?
I do think it does, um. But I also worry about with, you know, with the five oh one C three that that's, sorry.
No, go, I'm saying, yes, that's kinda where I was headed with that. Do we even need like a? If that five oh one C three comes, that might just be the fundraising group and we can. Except for pros.
Yeah.
Is fundraising, it's more or less just incorporated into that.
Yeah.
The legal direction I got is that pros should not have any. Fundraising. Tasks, people, anything. So that was the the legal advice I received. So I'd probably recommend that, not doing that. But but grants, hey. But I think it's safer to call it grants, yeah.
Okay.
And so we would remove a fundraising liaison and we would just.
Have like a Friends of Wellington.
Yeah, thanks for donating your time as a five oh one C three that's gonna help us out. Amazing.
With going back to the grants, one, two, how often do you want me sending these things to you?
Sure. Flood my inbox.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll I'll sort through them all.
Okay.
Or if we, if you wanna hold on to them and set a meeting with me. Once a month and we just go through them and pick and choose the ones that we wanna actually dial in, pers- potentially pursue. That would also be fun.
Cool. We did, let's do that.
Okay.
So we're saying let's strike through fundraising liaison, let's have a Friends of Wellington liaison.
I think we just leave it as Friends of Wellington, you are a group and we'll.
Falls within the partnerships.
Yeah, falls within partnerships, yeah.
Laurel Lynn, how do you feel, what do you guys think? For co-chair, cause we still need a co-chair, right?
Yeah, I'm thinking Aaron.
Aaron, where are you, where are your feelings?
No, I think that's fine, I I'm happy to help, I mean, John and I have tag teamed some meetings together and got in front of these guys. Been brutalized by the board trustees. I'm happy to go to battle with John.
I think you make a nice.
That's an acceptance?
I'll accept, yeah.
Okay, we do have to technically vote on that one, so Aaron, all in favor? It's good, it's good, um I will, for the other liaisons, let me talk to Robert and see what he wants. And then I'll just do whatever. And see if he wants to do the partnerships or um but you know, we'll come up with something else as well, so.
I'm sure Robert would wanna be involved with all of it anyways.
I was gonna say, if there's need for partnership stuff too, I I love doing that stuff and like you were saying, the events. Uh that was what I I did through college and everything too, so.
Perfect, okay, it's good.
I'll get you hooked up with everybody if you're not already.
I did a lot with, like that's how Dennis and I know each other, I used to work at Sparge.
Um, okay, great, well, this feels really good.
Thank you.
Um, anything else on that, Billy?
Good. Um then I guess the next thing is. We'll we'll assume the new chair positions and secretary positions starting the first of the year. And we had talked about um or put it out there when this discussion first came out. That it would be an annual thing so that it can switch up so that uh different ideas come in from different positions. It definitely ha- doesn't have to, but I think from. A perspective where everybody's terms are all so different, that if you have it for a year and you know you're still in term. Then, you know, if the chair changes because they're almost the end of their term, we have someone that can be there for a year or maybe two years, like that kind of stuff. Comes into play, since there are terms, um hopefully everybody here will continue as long as they possibly can, but. I know things change, so.
Who keeps track of terms?
The town clerk, the town clerk has them.
Do we have a town clerk?
Almost. Well, but when you fill a position that someone left early, you only you fill their term, so so you could fill a position where someone's used. Only three months, yeah, but actually in the last, in the last time that that happened, we actually went to the board for approval and said it's. Can you push this on because it's only a month and then we'd have to do a public search for this, the person that we just approved. For jumping on the board, so that's typically what we've done, if it's less than, less than one year, I think is what we kind of.
It's technically a board of board appointment, so they could too decide.
And yeah, so then when it's up, you just say, I still wanna be in it. And then um you fill out the application, they put, post it, do the interviews, typically I've granted interviews, now John or Aaron will. Help do that interview process. And then you make your recommendation um to the trustees and they're pretty much open to, they they attend the interviews. But they they rely heavily on what your interpretation is, so. Um typically people that have been Prost members that are passionate that want to stay Prost members. Have stayed on the board, um more often than not.
Tenth of. Do you wanna go through the future calendar or should we just, I'll just post it, I think I have some stuff to still put on it. But we we need to kind of move this forward.
Yes, uh do we have anything else that we need to discuss?
Uh I should do my updates real quick. Let me get down to my notes. Just cause there's a couple um quick things. Um we're in blowout season, so the parks are starting to turn into non-irrigated. Uh today, we started our ArcGIS mapping of all of our assets. So we are going to track everything ground up all the way to the tops of the poles that we have irrigation up. As best as we possibly can to get an asset management program and most importantly for us, probably a depreciation schedule, which has never been done, so. When the, when um, when and if the the master plan is approved in the in the next round of our budget next year. That will be um a huge combination for us to be able to move forward with projects, then we can kind of decide what's the most. Priority if we're looking forward to redoing parks or needing to uh use our capital for. Areas of town that need to actually be redone because they are depreciating assets past their point of safety and or. Past the point of us being able to recover any money from them, so that's, that's really good, we're doing that in. For the most part in-house, we have a contractor that's helping us with it, so it's fun. Um, the dog park also had the stamp approved, did I say that too, when when we had the dock? Yeah, so the dog park, that's only in the flood plain, not in the flood way, so that was a little bit easier, Nathan stamped that today as well, so we can start construction on that anytime. And we got the delivery of all of the disc golf stuff last week, so it's sitting in.
Man, this is a lot of stuff.
Sitting in the shop over at the at the park shop. So I'm waiting for Avery um to come to to basically let me know when he wants to come out with final design. Uh I would love everybody to be part of that process, whatever that looks like, I don't know if he's gonna come out and design it and then give it to us and then we walk it with him or. He designs it, yeah, um but everything is sitting in the shop minus the timbers that we have to purchase, but. I know we have like all these projects and I knew they were gonna pile up, it's just, there's no way to get through.
What a great problem to have.
All of it, right, and the and the cool thing is um a lot of these projects, if we purchase everything that's in the budget this year. We can do the project at any time, cause we're doing it all in-house and uh and or with um partnerships with Disc Mania, but. We'll get it, we got the goods, now we just gotta get it all in the ground and increase. Nine.
Okay, I have questions about that, but I will save it for another time, cause it's late. Cause that's the part I'm monitoring.
We'll go over all of that at some point before we put it in for sure. That's really it for parks right now, only a little bit of stuff going on. Uh registration is open for, or should be opening for winter too, but we're starting youth basketball, adult basketball. And adult volleyball coming up soon, adult basketball didn't run last year, we tried to run it, this year we have eight teams. Which is incredible, running that Thursday nights at the Boys and Girls Club, which is gonna be really fun. Uh we went from one team that signed up last year, so we couldn't run the league to. I think we had like nine or ten teams and we were like, we don't have enough time for all of you, like combined teams, I had a team and I dropped out, cause I was like, let. Everybody else play and I'll just jump on a team, so we have. Adult, adult basketball, co-ed, three v three. I was gonna jump on his team, but his team's full. But I can sub, cause I don't have a team yet. Um, so that is really awesome, the other cool thing is we just got some numbers in for recreation participation. And to this point, we are just about equal to where we were last year in the total year. Um, we still have to encumber winter two, which technically the seasons run after the new year. But all registrations come in, so last year, adult volleyball, youth volleyball. Pickleball for the second part of the season, that's all in the, even though it was twenty twenty four when they started, that's in the twenty twenty. Or twenty, yeah, that's in the twenty twenty three numbers, so it's like a year after that, that season is. So we're at the same amount of the participants as we were, last year was still one full season to go. Plus, we have had um half of our year of yoga has been, basically was canceled, cause we haven't been able to find a a. Yoga instructor yet, which we are hiring for right now. So given those numbers, we should be about two to three hundred participants more than last year. So we should go over the two thousand mark easily, well into maybe twenty one hundred, so. That's significant growth.
That's huge.
Um which is really cool. Yeah.
Yeah, congrats.
Thanks, it's, it's, it was actually when when I looked at those numbers, cause we're doing key performance indicators for budgeting, I was like, this looks the same as last year, that's good, and then I was like. But it doesn't have a whole season in it, so.
And Billy, sorry, that's adult and youth?
Yeah, so it's uh winter two is youth volleyball, adult volleyball. As well as we have, I think, three scheduled um or two scheduled uh dodgeball tournaments. Those might not be registered before the turn of the year, cause the numbers start January first, so if we open registration before then, can people sign up? That'll count for this year, so um anywhere from a hundred fifty to two hundred plus whatever we get for dropping pickleball. Which still isn't counted, which starts next month, so.
At least don't do dodge dodgeball on the first Wednesday of the month.
We're doing three different dodgeball events this year, so. That's all they are, that's all we have. I expect everybody to play dodgeball, in fact, I think we should have a Prost dodgeball team, yes. Let, it was so much fun last year, oh, it was ridiculous.
Yeah, you should all play on the same team as me, cause you might not like.
The other thing is Cody and I went to that Noco Trail Summit and it was absolutely awesome, everybody was really um. We got great feedback from the the information that we presented, as well as like the partners that were starting to form, they were all there and we talked further about. Pushing all this forward, I mean, Loveland was next to us and they're like. Wow, you guys have a lot going on, it's like new people come in, they don't realize how much we're trying to connect and what we're actually doing within the town, so that was really good to see.
One question, going back to parks, so apologies, you talked about the asset inventory, we had spoke about that months ago about. The representatives for each park helping with.
Yeah.
An inventory, so is that something that you're still thinking?
Um, I would say. On the level of what we're trying to capture now, no, because um. I don't wanna say it's, it's definitely not that hard, it's just very technical.
Yeah.
And it's one person at a time with, it's called a bad elf and it's just really just like you put it on irrigation head. Type in head, type in what it is, and it's just like one person cruising through our system. And we really only have one post for that, but what we will do is be able to send that out and use it. For when you guys are going through your park, if you see a swing that's broken, you'll literally be able to click on that swing, see that asset. Put in something that says damage, take a picture of the damage and it'll all be able to see that. And then I'll be able to go like, oh, that's Michelle's park, Michelle, on Tuesday, you need to, first thing in the morning, you need to go to that.
Okay, nice.
Yeah. Or that's future, at a minimum, you'll be able to like text me a picture and then I can put it. Put it in there, right, but eventually we'll get that integrated into like a larger scale program where maybe people in the community can even just say, look at this, this is off. And I just, it just generates a work order to that person immediately. But getting people to come out here was like thirty five to forty five grand, just to have them capture and we're gonna do it. Maybe for about seven thousand with help and then Eric and I are running through. If you wanna come help us, you probably can, it's gonna take like eighteen months to get done, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I still don't have an answer from Jerry, but he says, I swear, they're gonna come out and do the video for the Park of Vanity maps. He is so heavily in budget right now, but but he's, he's got a guy that's gonna come take pictures, he said in October, last time I talked to him, three days ago.
Okay, thank you, it'd be so cool, write the maps.
We're our thick in budget, so um. That's primarily like everything that we're talking right about right now is budget stuff. And we've already done a retreat, uh we did the Boonanza, You Came. Um, it's always a cool event where you can learn about pretty much everything that's going on in town, so uh. The so far, I can't, it hasn't been approved, right, so we can just, I can just say with feedback I've heard, the Parks Master Plan. For has has a lot of support. Yes, so that's great news, um. The other master plans that are, you know, kind of hand in hand with parks is the Downtown Master Plan. Which we've encouraged to move up a year, so rather than starting in twenty twenty seven, potentially starting in twenty twenty six. And that may or may not encompass uh Centennial Park, that might be a big part of it, so. Um but we don't know at this point, but the fact that we don't have to wait till twenty twenty seven to start thinking about a master plan. Um part of the reason why it is slightly delayed even, like two years from now, seems like a long time. But we are uh doing the major Cleveland project, starting next year. We're at about sixty percent design, um and it's a huge undertaking. Uh but that is kind of kind of lay the groundwork for preparing for a downtown master plan, cause we'll have. New roads, sidewalks, all the things downtown, so it'll be super amazing, new drainage, you know, all the very important things. And there was one more thing I was gonna tell you guys. Budget, supporting the parks things.
As far as the budget goes, there also is a request for a facilities and which encompass parks and trails. Um and amenities, a self-evaluation of all accessibility. So that's on the, that's on the budget for this year as well, which would, I mean. Park and Rec Master Plan or the Park and Trails, whatever we wanna call it, the Master Plan, and then that will help um. Push forward some of the other master plans that come in, you know, if there's a downtown master plan and we do the Parks Master Plan. The idea of what Centennial comes out of Centennial from the Park Master Plan will help. The Downtown Master Plan and Transportation Master Plan will help all of the like there. The theme, a lot of our theme is after the water and the wastewater going online, like we need to start planning for what. The amenities around now that we can actually build into the town, like what it's gonna look like, so we need to plan for that. Cause just like this group doesn't want to just like start throwing darts at the dartboard, nor does, nor does anybody else in their departments, nor does the town. So we're trying to do strategically all of these plans that need to be updated, that we can all kind of go forward together.
And and one of the big questions based on the last topic that we discussed regarding impact fees was, you know, when can we start reconsidering the impact fees? These master plans are required pretty much to say, what are the requirements, what are we actually taking money to build? Um so once these master plans go into place, we'll then have a better indication and claim to. Ask for more, if that's necessary or if it's needed, parks impact fees, trails impact fees. So uh the Transportation Master Plan is first, parks downtown, um so I wonder if trails is included in transportation. I don't know.
Master plan, trails will be part of parks.
Oh, we are part of parks, okay, so at that point, once those complete, there is another study that has to occur. Nexus, these are things I'm learning, and then then we can reassess the actual impact fees. So we're looking years out, but there is actually a plan to reassess impact fees, which I think is gonna be really important. Based on the trajectory of the growth of some of the developments that's going to be occurring outside of two years. Uh there's a significant possibility for some dollars from impact fees to become, not just. Not just from an increase, but just from a general build, uh building permit.
Yeah.
So all that money goes towards infrastructure, technically, right, so we'll be in a better place there. I think that's all I have unless anybody asks questions, but you can always hit me up anytime, regardless, so.
Impact fees will be great, we've talked about, we've been asking the impact fees to get raised for about the last six years now. Think I approached the trustees about six years ago, asking for the fees to go up compared to other municipalities. Our rates are lower than pretty much everybody for parks and trails.
I'm just so glad that we actually have steps moving in that direction now, versus like, I really hope we can do this, so. But, believe me, I was, uh, hitting it hard during the budget. Thing of like, so when are we gonna do this, how does this happen? So I got, I got the whole spiel and understanding of, of what has to happen first, so.
Yeah, Cody came and explained the rational nexus and. All the stuff that needs to happen, master plan will drive that, and once we have projects, we can also, you know. That will dictate impact of what community does for where we're at and what we need to move forward with, and that gives us project costs which directly relate to. Impact fees.
What does the community need, how much does it cost? How much should people pay, so, like, that's the, the order of operations there, so. So there's a, a clear path at least, not saying it's gonna be anytime soon, but there, there is a path. And it is progressing.
Thank you.
Um, if we have a porta potty at our park that needs to be.
Oh, don't you worry, you should never have to, uh, can I just stop you there? We've been, we have been so on top of our public services, um, they have been. Just, uh, no, they've been, um, lacking in their services and we've gone to. I, I don't even wanna describe it tonight, if you see something, please let me know. Please, immediately, but.
Uh, the linear park one needs attention.
It has every single day. We're recovering a decent amount of money from them, from their lack of service.
My husband was cleaning trash out of it.
Take pictures and send it to me.
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed Cody presenting last month, that was fantastic. So, I, I don't know if, I know we've talked about getting him on regularly, but that was so informative. I think we'd like to see m- more of an organized layout, um, right, so maybe Cody comes and talks every September, right? Um, we have different people that come and approach us at the same time each year, so. It's already pre-written, we, we don't have to think about it, we can just have people, people come.
Yeah, Bob, hopefully we can get Bob after the first of the year to talk about the downtown. The Cleveland Project before that kicks off.
Multimodal is one of the grants, it's, it's also paying for that, so I know that impacts a lot of the stuff that you guys talk about too, so that's, that's cool. It will definitely be so much safer.
Since I've been going around the Wellington Community Park, I live right there. Every day when I'm getting off twenty-five, come back from work, traveling on sixty-four back towards Buffalo Creek and the park itself. Right by where the train tracks are, we have the crosswalk right there, there's a big bush. And in my mind, all I can see is a little kid not being able to be seen, because I'm six one and I stand. On my bike pedals, so like, seven, seven plus feet and no one stops. And or they don't see me, so I would stand there and kinda write down who would stop and not like, obviously like, oh, that person. Let me write down the license plate, but count numbers, one in, uh, I think it was one in four people on average saw me. And or stopped at that spot, so maybe if there, I know raised crosswalks suck. You know, cause everyone has to slow down, you wanna be a nuisance, community getting in and out, but maybe some flashing lights or get rid of the bush. Cause I see kids like hiding, almost.
Is this rabbit brush?
I think it is.
Yeah, and that space was identified as one of the spaces, we started our walk with Safe Routes to Parks. Um, so it was identified as a key transportation space and one that needed to be upgraded because of the railroad tracks. As well as the crossing of Washington, which, uh, what, we saw a couple people, the speed limit's thirty. And they were going like, had to be going fifty, and there were a group of us in yellow vests just standing out there, so I, I completely agree, and it was identified. As a space to improve.
Cool, thank you, I know he talked about safe rides and.
Oh, the rabbit brush? Yeah, I have to see where that easement goes though, cause that might not even be ours, but. Yeah, exactly. No, they won't care, but. We'll, we'll have to see. That's been off.
Okay, anybody else?